Welcome to the Doylestown Township Planning Commission meeting of March 22nd already. That's good. First order of business is to review the meeting minutes from February. Does anybody have any comments or corrections?
I have two corrections on page three, the third paragraph from the bottom. It said, Mr. Rupp expressed that it showed, you know, talks about lighting showing on adjacent properties. I was talking about homes, showing homes on the adjacent properties. And also on the page six, the fourth paragraph in the top, I was referring to the parcel, not parcels across the other side of Meeting House.
I also had a correction under mine. It said, Mrs. Sanders, as I raised the question, this could be a safety issue because of the hill as a vehicle turned. It was specifically the state, the school buses, because that was what the residents had mentioned. So I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but since it's kids involved. And we did spend a lot of time talking about the school buses.
The school bus.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I just had a minor thing that I went over with Stephanie on page two, about three quarters of the way down. It just says Ms. Henderson confirmed that these neighbors are in favor of widening the road. It should be, are not in favor of widening the road. So do we have a motion to approve as amended there?
I move the minutes be approved as amended.
Second that.
Great. All in favor? Okay. Are there, is there anybody here with any public comments, anything other than what's on the agenda? Okay, well then we can move right into 280 North Broad Street. And we have, let's see, Jason, did you want to introduce that?
All right, I'd be happy to. So I'm joined tonight by Kelly McGowan, who's counsel for Arcadia. And I'm really back tonight, not so much with a formal presentation. You were kind enough to make time for me in December. And then again, in a joint planning commission meeting with the borough at the end of January. And I thought both of those meetings were very constructive. We obviously presented to you a plan with two versions. The first version was for a multifamily building of approximately five, five stories of approximately 217 units. The property straddles the borough and the township. The preponderance of the property is in fact in the township, though the township portion of the property is landlocked. And we, the property has a mixed use element. There's about 6,000 square feet of commercial space integrated into the property. And I guess at this point, before we went further with any additional analysis, I just thought it would be great for us to receive some feedback from you if you're prepared to give us some, so that we may begin to modify our proposal in a direction that might be of some interest to the township.
Well, I was just briefly discussing this with Stephanie before the meeting. And we were talking about, you know, the number of units seems to be an awful lot of density for that area. And I know the borough is concerned about that as well. So it's the number of units. And then also the fact that the parcel that's, the township parcel is the least desirable half. It's right next to sewage treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And it's just the views, I can't imagine those apartments being all that desirable. So the question was, you know, and Stephanie mentioned this, that what if the brewery operation or something like that were to take place in that back portion where there's nothing to look at, that was more of an industrial application rather than residential? And have, you know, fewer residential units more toward the front where the views are a little more attractive. That was just, you know, something that we were talking about. I just, I can't see it being all that appealing. It's been that area as far as the height and the rest of it. I don't think there's necessarily a problem with that. It would probably fit in fairly well, but I just can't imagine it being that attractive for residents.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead.
There are a number of things that I won't support on this. And number one is looking at this parcel by itself. You know, that has multiple issues with it. One is spot zoning. So I think if we consider moving forward with this, with the developer, I think we have to look at that entire zoning district and the impact of changing density on any one parcel should be applied to the entirety of it or some version of that, not just one parcel. So I, I just, we never have done that before. We've always avoided spot zoning. And I think this is even more important on this site. Because if you start multiplying the density onto other parcels in that district, it becomes, it makes me a little nervous. And I think the impacts start becoming exponential at some point. And I don't know what that point is, but that happens in zoning. An increasing density this dramatically on any parcel, I don't think I could support unless it was part of some public improvement overlay zone, similar to maybe what we used on Toll Brothers. You know, that has some potential here, but in the end, I'm not convinced this is the right spot in the township for this type of density or this type of development perhaps. So I think it's not a quick and easy recommendation on my part to the board of supervisors on a proposal like this. We've taken a lot longer analyzing zoning changes on developments with far less impact than this one has. So that's, that's sort of where, the way I've been looking at it over the past few months since we've had a chance to see some of the details of it.
Tom, may I, may I ask you, this is Kelly. On, you know, in terms of your thought process with respect to that, that spot zoning issue or the, or the treatment of, you know, this, this property or this district. And then you mentioned potentially, you know, some type of overlay. Would, would you be inclined, and I'd open this up to the planning commission too, you know, something similar to what the borough's, you know, been doing with their overlay along the Broad Street corridor? Would that be something that you would be more inclined to look at? Because, you know, when we look at this, we know it doesn't fit in your ordinance. And a rezoning in this case wouldn't fit in your ordinance either. Because, you know, they're, they're, none of your zoning districts are going to accomplish, you know, anything close to what we're looking at here with modifications. As I know, you know, Jason is willing to make in response to all of your comments. But on that overlay concept, is that something you've given any thought to at this point?
Explain what the boroughs, so we all are on the same page.
Sure.
When you're talking about that, explain what you view that as being.
So specifically with respect to the intelligencer property across the street, across Broad Street. There was, and as part of the corridor study and, and, you know, Jason's been through this overlay zoning district or ordinance that the borough is considering. It is, it is an overlay that, and as you know, as the planning commission is aware, doesn't change the underlying zoning of the parcel. So you avoid that issue, but it has performance standards and it has more, it has different density standards, for example, different standards. And then it also on top of that has architectural standards. And it has community objectives and things that are accomplished within an overlay that are more, that are more site specific, but also because it's an overlay, can be geared towards community objectives and can be geared more towards a general, you know, feeling of the area. There are, you can have specific requirements in order to, you can put an overlay over a large area, but then have requirements ordered to qualify for the overlay in order to implement it. So we can be sufficiently specific that way as well. So you can kind of control what's possible under the overlay. And again, you're not impacting the underlying zoning district.
And that's different than what I was talking about.
Okay.
With overlay zone, with a public improvement overlay zone. That's where the increase of density is traded off by the property owner, the developer, making certain improvements within the township. All that other, everything else you're talking about, I think, just becomes part of our normal zoning. This is above and beyond that. We're gonna, we've always asked for all those things you've included in the borough's overlay district. That's kind of standard zoning in Doylestown Township. To include all that, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's even a point of discussion on our side. And that's what we expect. But to change density dramatically, dramatically, like you're proposing, I think that goes way, way beyond any of those criteria or performance standards that you're talking about.
And we, and I think, and, you know, Judy, Tom, and everyone else, you know, will hear from, I think, we obviously need to explore density. We obviously need to look at numbers and look at comfort levels with numbers. And I know Jason and Jase will tell you is not a developer who, I've said this to your staff, who says, I need X number of units, that type of thing. He's talking in front of them, he's just not, not that, that kind of, not that kind of property owner. So when we're talking about, you know, what works for the township, obvious, obviously, you know, we already know this number doesn't. We can, we hear that. So I think coming into and talking about what else might work for the township and if, and we can address it that way. And this is a good start of public improvement overlay. I'll look into that. That's, that's not something that I've implemented before, but it sounds interesting. Is there something specific like Tom or planning commission members, you would think in terms of, you know, when you're trading off density and not the numbers we're talking, but when you're trading off certain density that you would be looking at or some specific concerns the planning commission has, like for the township?
I don't, we haven't talked about that. I, we haven't had those discussions, but that's usually a discussion that takes place above our pay grade.
Sure.
One of the things is just the question of the use as well for that parcel. Whether that's an appropriate use for that piece. And whether, when we look at that whole Broad Street corridor area, you know, whether that kind of density of housing and residential is, is something that we want to see? Or do we want to see something more in keeping with the, the current zoning and the commercial development in that area?
So Judy, I, I went into your zoning ordinance and took a look at your current LI zoning, including with an I, because residential, we know, doesn't fit. But with an I towards commercial uses and what, what might be permitted. Currently in LI, some of the commercial uses, we're talking about those, you know, retail shops, brewer eating place, they're not currently permitted.
Right.
Though, you know, those types of uses again would be, you know, something that we're looking at in your C1 or C2 district. The current zoning right now, you know, we're really limited to those more intense defined industrial uses. You know, your fuel storage, building materials, equipment storage, truck terminal, that kind of stuff. So, you know, going back to what Tom said about how we handle the zoning and, you know, avoiding a zoning issue, either way with respect to the use, if we're looking at a use outside, you know, that industrial use, going to have to think about how to address, you know, whether it be through an overlay or something like that. You know, the permitted use, there's also, you know, you also have your zoning hearing board. And, and, you know, the, the use variance path. And this actually is one of those properties that, it is a pretty unique property. When you talk about, you know, the uses and what's appropriate and what's possible. You know, we're starting the conversation here with the planning commission and with the board. It's, it's not something that I would ever take directly to zoning. You know, that's, that's not what this looks like. You know, but, but the zoning hearing board is, you know, does have some jurisdiction to work, work with us in this process.
And I don't think you want to go there.
Yeah, no, Tom, trust me.
That is such a threat. When you say you're going for a use variance, I mean, that, that, that strips the supervisors of their, of their authority in zoning altogether. And zoning changes should be zoning changes and not a use variance. And I'm not opposed to changing the zoning there.
Okay.
We've done it everywhere else in the township with the industrial properties. The whole Central Park area was zoned of some sort of industry back 30 years ago and never worked out. But I'm not opposed to looking at residential and mixed uses there, right? I think it's compatible with what's across the street and what's going to be across the street. But I think there are just too many questions right now to give you an answer and, and put support behind this. I'm just not at that point to do it.
What, what can you, I'm familiar with some of the changes that they've made in the borough in terms of, for the Mrs. Paul's site and the CarTech site, I'm very familiar with those two. But for the Intel Building, what is the density that they're proposing there? And the building heights and such? And, you know, we're dealing with a corridor that's seen some significant changes here in the last 25 years and will continue. And, you know, that, that corridor was never kind of designed for the amount of homes that are on there now and proposed. And I have some concerns as to Broad Street corridor itself, as to what really needs to be done to be able to accommodate all the traffic that's going to happen. And I know there's, you know, the borough side and there's the township side, but together it's an issue. I mean, I live at the other end of Broad Street, on the other side of Sandy Ridge. There used to be no lights between there and Main Street. Now there's, I think, six lights that, and one to be added. And the traffic level has picked up dramatically. And I think that's, that's an issue that really needs to be kind of studied a little bit more seriously before anything is added on. And so that's, that's some of my major concerns, the overall density, what's going on in that area. The other thing is, is that you are, where you're placing this proposal, on one side, you're overlooking a factory roof. And the other side, mini storage. And Jason, that's an issue you need to address as to whether, you know, those apartments are marketable there. I commend you on the architecture. Architecture sometimes really hides density, which is, I've learned that over the years. People don't really understand density clearly. But nonetheless, there's a lot of impact that's going to occur as a result of what the borough is doing, what you're proposing on this site.
Greg, if I may take a moment to respond, first of all, thank you, you know, Judy, Tom, Greg, all of you for your comments thus far. So Greg, I'll take some of your comments out of order. But first on the traffic, I had heard pretty loud and clear from the borough that they wanted to begin to entertain this proposal until a comprehensive Broad Street corridor traffic study had been conducted. So I think you know that when I met with you in, in January, I had done a brief traffic study focused really on two intersections, Broad Street and Atkinson, which will be a new signal intersection at the new intelligencer site. And then our new driveway, which will be sitting on Broad Street between Atkinson and a new driveway to be constructed at the intelligencer site. So we, I've actually had TPD prepare a scope, a draft scope for that comprehensive Broad Street corridor traffic study. And I've shared it with the borough and still awaiting feedback. But I recognize that if you're to entertain a change of use like this, that you wish to look at it holistically to make sure that the infrastructure in place for vehicles is that. Correct. So I recognize that that's kind of precondition to anything going forward. As for, I guess, the question of density and height of the project across the street. So the zoning ordinance there provides incentives to get to a density of 35 units per acre on that site. The specific project that's been proposed there, I believe, is 32 units to the acre. So it didn't quite max out what's allowed under the zoning. As for height, it's a five-story building like we've proposed. So its height will be between about 60 and 65 feet most likely. So one, one thing that, just to really follow up to a point that all, all three of you have made so far, which is just the changing nature of Broad Street. You know, the way in which industrial properties, particularly on the north side of Broad Street, like CarTech and Mrs. Paul's, and now the PennDOT properties and the, it all moved in this residential direction with some mixed use. And obviously, our side of the street, there's, there's hardly been any activity. And, you know, our sense is that eventually the other properties, when the time is right, they too will likely convert in this, in this manner. Ours has only come about because the Tilly Fire Extinguisher Company has relocated. It was acquired and absorbed into a conglomerate of mechanical contractors. I understand, though there's no commitment, that the property at Doyle and, and Broad Street, that, that is under a lease agreement with Fred Beans that I think has a term of at least 10 years at this point. So that's not likely to get redeveloped in the next decade. Self-storage, however, I think that is a far more flexible condition and it would only convert if the values are right. The, the real constraint on that property, just so you all know, is that is the Kemfab property. So that, that has very serious environmental constraints that our property does not have.
Kemfab's technically next door in the borough.
Oh, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Yep, that's true. That's right. That's Heywood Becker's property right next door. That's right.
That's where the Kemfab is. The storage is where they're going to place, they had it wrong, it's not in the borough, it's in the paper. But that's where they're going to place their little treatment plant. So some of the work they're going to do on the water treatment is going to go there. However, in Sinclair knows this as well, there is a ton of floodplain on that property as well. So there's, you know, there's constraints. And the other question I would have for you on, on the property is, have you guys done your site capacity calculations under our ordinance yet?
The answer is no. And, and I think.
You might want to do that first.
Well, I.
Just because I, you're, I know you're starting with around three acres. And technically, I think in talking with our planner's office, when you take off some of the woodlands and the wetlands and all the fun stuff that's on the property, you probably may not have three to work with when you're done. So I think it would be helpful so that the planning commission understands, you know, how many acres do you really have for net buildable? And Kelly's been through that a number of times with us on other projects. So she knows the importance of it.
No, thank you very much. And we certainly should do that, that analysis. I think we probably entered this situation with the thought that we may in fact need relief from such standards, given that this is, you know, a more urbanized site near the borough. But I recognize that that is something that we should do to, you know, inform the planning commission about what would be normally buildable under your ordinance.
And that's typically, one of the requirements is to show the planning commission what would be allowed. And then, you know, to kind of put it all in perspective as to how far off from what's typically permitted to where, you know, it may quote unquote end up.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I'll do that.
What was the total number of units then at the Intel Building?
I think there were 231, 232.
Well, that didn't really give you an answer, Jason. You know, our, our efforts have to be in what we would like to see for that whole area. You know, it's more than just the one parcel, as Tom said, so.
Absolutely.
Some work to do.
No, absolutely. And I, I think that that's, I have to say, I wholly concur with looking at this in isolation. I think that you need to be considerate of not just this LI district that the property is located in, but of course cognizant of its adjacencies, such as the wastewater treatment plant and other things. There, there's no doubt that this is a transitional zone. And what, what we've, we've encountered a lot of these kinds of transitional properties in other boroughs in the region, they seem to be the ones most ripe for, for redevelopment. And so thus far, at least, consumers seem to be willing to accept a little of the trade off that they may be entering a gleaming beautiful building, but the neighbors are not quite as gleaming and beautiful as, as their residents are. And I think that that's a trade off many are willing to make for, you know, the luxury of walking to town to dine and enjoy.
But some of those things aren't going to change. You know, it's not like the potential is for those areas to get completely cleaned up. You know, some of that stuff's going to stay there.
Absolutely, absolutely. The, so it sounds like I have some, some things to work on. The only thing, I guess, I'll, I'll share with you what I'm exploring as an alternative to what I put forth earlier. So the two earlier proposals were 176 to 217. The, the notion instead that I'm approaching is one where the density is a fair bit lower and that the buildings have a massing and scale that's probably closer to like Lantern Hill. But that we would look to do this as rental apartments, but without the same sort of mass and scale as what the intelligencer is doing with structured parking and all. So that would be one alternative to it and still provides for a mixed use element out, out in front in the borough. I think, you know, the traffic impact of that would be much less potentially as well. So we're, we're trying that out, but the geometry of the site poses some challenges to that because it's, it's a little bit like a bowling alley. It's narrow and deep. But I think actually Lantern Hill had a funny shape like that as well. So we, you know, we're, we're going to have to dig in a little bit to understand what's possible. And if I have something and to show you in a few months' time, maybe I'll have a chance to speak with you.
Okay.
Have you done this structure?
I compare with Greg's comments on the architecture. I think he did a great job of that. And it was nice to see, you know, that reflected in, in the visioning for this project. I thought that was quite attractive. It just seems like, you know, the density and having the residential backup to the wastewater tree, you know, it just seems backward somehow. And I don't know if it's even worked to convert it a little bit, but that's something to think about.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all this input.
And I, one thing I could suggest, when you have your planner or whoever evaluating the option you just talked about, you really ought to ask them, even though the adjoining properties aren't going to develop at the same rate as yours or same time, that is there an opportunity for integrating all those properties up there? And that might be just shared access, shared parking, shared open space. Because there really are some opportunities up through that corridor. The Tilly Homestead, you know, the, the wetland area that goes through there. And there's no reason why you can't look at that at this stage even and have some anticipation of it.
Well, thank you. I think I would love to do that. One thing I'll just tell you is that I had an intern in my office do some historic research. And at one point in time, there was a scheme to have Atkinson. to, to have Atkinson continue through the Tri Partners property. It's, it's essentially that boundary between the Tilly and the Tri Partners property. And it continues through to Avenue A. So they're actually perfectly aligned. And so conceivably down the road, those could be connected. Had a chance to talk to the owners of that property and I would certainly love to provide future connection points if and when those properties are redeveloped. I think that's exactly the right idea and to get access to out to Harvey Avenue one day would be great.
Maybe it could continue through the property, the town, the boroughs anticipating subdividing in the township soon. Just kidding, just.
I, I don't know this one.
Texas Eastern Gas Line, that's probably not happening.
I know. We have not wanting adjoining municipalities to go through the borough. They've shut streets off in the past. So.
I, I'd like to just continue to encourage you to continue on. We're obviously limited industrial and any of the uses that are allowed in the ordinance. Several of those probably don't work going forward. At least in my mind, with the nature of Broad Street and access points and such. So it, it, I think you're coming up with some creative ideas. One of the things I might mention to you is maybe a little bit more of an intensive use in the borough side of the property and a little bit less intense on the township side, just because of the you know, physical amenity, the restrictions of the site in terms of drainage and vegetation and such.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, certainly the intensity of the intelligencer sort of establishes a precedent that maybe should be mirrored on the immediate frontage and then perhaps then there's a gradient from that point going back. And, and certainly preserving that riparian corridor towards the back is essential, both for the ecology of that area, but also as a buffer, you know. And I, we wouldn't want to touch that anyway. We want to have people at least be able to enjoy, particularly during the summer months when the trees have left, that there's some, some amount of screening from that.
Now, you mentioned the existence of that lease on, I think it was Doyle and Broad Street. But there's the old, it was called the Philadelphia Rivet, right next to your left, facing your property. What's the status of that? At one point that was in play?
That, that's owned by the same, the same group that owns.
Same group, okay.
Yeah, they acquired it a few years ago.
Didn't realize that.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Chris Del Plato within the last couple of months and I think maybe it was purchased twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the county intermediate unit is the tenant in that rivet space.
Really?
Oh.
Storage. I've heard it was for storage.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay, anybody else on this one?
I, I would just say, I remember there was a couple that came on who was, I'm drawing a blank to the neighborhood with the brick, three-story townhomes. What's it called again?
Belvedere.
Belvedere.
Yeah.
I think they would have been thrilled to see the second half of Belvedere. So because of those, those went for a pretty penny back in the day. If you go back and look in the newspaper, if your intern wants to read up, they were like, there was a bidding wars for those. And they're not as dense, but they were, they're beautiful. And that makes more sense with the park there. That's just my humble opinion about the space. And probably more in line with Doylestown in general.
Yeah, no, I just saw some development occurring. I guess it's the Dairy Queen property that goes all the way back to where, like across from where the post office is. And it was all kind of cleared. I saw it on the Dairy Queen, but then I was at the post office and now you see all that cleared out. And you can see Belvedere very clearly from the back there.
Right.
From the post office now and you could never, used to never be able to see it.
Right. And at the corner of Union and Broad, they're also doing something there, I believe, as well. So I'm sure they're probably feeling a little anxious about their investment, even though that's the borough, but.
Well, the good news is, I, I'll, I'll say, Nancy, I know a little bit about this, that we're working on a small for-sale project on North Main Street. And so we've studied the immediate comps in Belvedere and there, there's actually, they've enjoyed a great deal of appreciation in the last two years. So those, those homes are now selling well above their original price.
Oh, yeah.
Like a lot of new homes, they, they did suffer during, during the Great Recession. But they've recovered their value and I, I think it's right. At this point, they represent a very attractive comp for us. And, but I, you know what? I'll keep an open mind about for-sale for two eighty North Broad. My, because of the environmental and, and its adjacencies, I, I thought it might be better for rental. Sometimes people are a little hesitant to make a big financial commitment when there's those kinds of adjacencies, but as a tenant, they're not making the same kind of commitment. But I'll definitely keep an open mind to that. Thank you.
Appreciate. Well, your architecture is beautiful. I love what you do. And I see, maybe I'm just in that demographic where people are quote downsizing into like Belvedere-type homes because they want to be in the, the borough. So you might be surprised. So, but thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you all for your time.
Great. Thank you.
Great, alright.
Bye, Kelly.
Thanks. Thank you, Jen.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll go on to our discussion of code review if not sure, I was I was away this weekend. I wasn't terribly prepared on this. To discuss what our status is with our current code review. I don't know if there's anything on your minds, Sinclair, that you wanted to bring up.
Well, let me just say that in January, the ordinances that you reviewed for subdivision land development and zoning were all approved by the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, unless we have any new ones that are specific to zoning and subdivision land development, you know, those would be next. Sinclair, I know, has a few that are non-zoning and, and subdivision land development, but I'll let him see if he has anything else.
Yeah, we're very pleased that the other two ordinances just passed in February. So we're waiting for them to be added or incorporated into the code, which should probably be within the next month. But I don't think we have anything else for Planning Commission just at the moment.
Okay, good. Well, then we're gonna have to dive into this Broad Street quarter. And see what we want to do there.
Well, I, I think we ought to keep going on, you know, the county property and the shopping too. I think that's
Absolutely.
I think that's actually more important than the Broad Street property. I mean, the township kind of controls all that. Since they, contrary to what they said about going to the zoning hearing board, I mean, that's just a terrible move. Because that's the Board of Supervisors of their legislative responsibility for zoning. And I, I just, I can't believe she brought that up.
I, I didn't think she meant that seriously.
Bring things up, but oh, yeah, we didn't mean that, but that's what we could do and that, that would be
County property, where, I mean, there's
We're, we're waiting for the county. The county is working on the RFI.
And I have, I did speak to Evan and he has drafted his RFI and he is currently having it reviewed by the county, other people at the county who have to review it before he can send it to us.
Yeah.
So people above him who would do that kind of review.
And that's been going on for a couple of months. I think I talked to him back in January about it or February.
Talked to him in February, so, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't know what their timeline is to pass?
No, no.
They don't have one.
Have we ever seen anything as to what exactly portions of the site they're talking about?
They, they, yes.
I haven't seen a, a map or anything that has shown that. I don't know.
No, it's, yeah, they did. They did. I think they talked to us about the area where the old Nishamani Manor is located between like the Health Department, the current Planning Commission building, like the old Alms House and the old on that side of six eleven.
I, I know they're talking about those, but like a map or geography or something that showed the area that they're physically talking about.
That's the, that's the area.
Okay.
They haven't shown anything else because I don't think they, I don't think they've really vetted that out yet.
I think you and I looked at that, didn't we, Stephanie, on the tax map? And if you draw a rectangle that takes in twenty-eight acres, it goes back up to the beginning of the women's prison or the, not the women's, but the work release. And takes in that whole area. So.
Then we've got to think about that shopping center across the, you know, across the street.
Yeah.
Because that's really underutilized.
Is there any, any models of, I mean, of redevelopment that any of you have experienced or seen that might provide a little bit of a model for what we're looking at? I mean, you know, sometimes it's nice to see what has been done on other sites and, and use that as a kind of a
Yeah.
Not a guiding post, but as an example of where we could go or what we would like to see.
I was just today passing through Wayne, Pennsylvania, and they have just done a mixed-use development in what was an old shopping center site. And it's, it's housing, it's, it's mixed-use, it's very high-end. They have done a beautiful job of that. And I, I just saw it today driving by and I was like thinking that, that it fit maybe what we're talking about. So I'll see if I can get some more information on that.
Right.
And Upper Dublin Township's done a good bit of it. The old Prudential site. If I could talk Gary Weaver in our office to letting us all come down to his new apartment in there, it's the exact same thing they were talking about here, but I don't, I'm not sure I can talk him into letting, letting us all come down. But it's the same thing. It's the same exact design that this guy had with the parking. Pardon me?
Which guy? The, the mixed-use development or, or are you talking about the Broad Street stuff?
The Broad Street proposal.
No, I'm talking about, you know, the mixed-use development for not so much Broad Street, but over where the
Yeah, the shopping centers.
Shopping center is. And, you know, how we tie that into what might happen on the county property and going towards Central Park, you know, the Turk Park and all that, if we could tie that together. Might be, you know, because there's a lot of land there, a lot of potential.
Yeah.
So I'll see what I can pull together on this Wayne site, just because it, it looked very, to me, it looked very appealing and very much in keeping with the kind of things that we've been kind of talking about is, you know, what if we could do something like that?
Correct.
Well, I wonder if it would pay for somebody to call, talking to you, Stephanie. Not Brad, but what's Brad's son, Brad Goodman's son's name that was on the call?
Maybe Bruce, Bruce Goodman.
It was Adam.
And just tell Adam that we're still interested in talking about that and see, because he had he bought the property next door to him and at the discussion he had with us, he, I got the impression that he was looking at pulling those properties together and doing something with the old Sears site and, and the AAA property.
Yeah.
And just see where he is with it, because he might be further along with that than we know and
I can reach out to him.
Yeah, it's, it's worth. I mean, that was our goal is to keep in touch with those people and keep a dialogue going, whether it's a meeting or just discussion on the phone.
Right.
I, I think
There was someone else that you had, I think it was Neil Toll, huh?
Bruce Toll's organization.
You said he's doing some innovative things individually.
Yeah, I, it's his attorney that sort of runs it, like Dick McBride used to run. And they, they did most of the work in Upper Dublin. And I, I, I don't, I, did you send out a request to him? I know
No, because we were gonna do the, we did the first one, group.
Yeah.
And then we were gonna kind of sit back, talk about it and then decide on the next group to, to bring in and who that would.
Be a good person to bring in.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I don't know if you know, Bruce Toll broke, broke off or sold his interest in Toll Brothers. And Bob Toll runs Toll Brothers now and Bruce runs
E T.
Enterprises or whatever they call it. And they, they specialize in this type of redevelopment. And, and taking, doing infill a lot. And and I, I, from what I've seen of what they've been doing, it's, it's it's, you know, quality development and with some, they understand planning. And they're working in Upper Dublin, which isn't an easy municipality to work in. So that was my thought on it is, he doesn't have any, I don't think he has anything going on in Doylestown Township. I'll, I'll dig out his name again, or I gave it to you. You might want to dig it up and
Yeah, I can do that. I mean, if you wanted to bring, see if he would be willing to come and talk to you about the, the concept on this redevelopment aspect of properties and everything and potentials. We could certainly have him come as a guest at a future meeting.
And just the future.
To do that once we have this RFI or know a little bit more about it, to have these people come in and talk with us then.
Well, but they're, they're the kind of people that might submit. I mean, that's who they're looking for with the RFI.
All I'm saying is we might want to, you know, be a part of that.
Well, we're, we're, we're supposed to be. I mean, the, the county's obligated because they need a zoning change. Do anything there and they're obligated to come back and go over the RFI with us before they release it.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I confirm that with Evan. He knows that he needs to come back to the planning commission when it's, when the document is ready for review. So, I mean, he's waiting on, I don't know who up at the, I'd say at the courthouse.
Our next
You know.
I think, can I, I have a question. The, what, what is it zoned right now? The, the
The Nishamani Manor? That I believe is institutional.
Yeah.
So what would fall, what would be, what be, what would be able to be built there currently under the zoning?
Hang on.
Schools, hospitals, prisons.
I actually have the zoning. Um, let me just go back.
I mean, the, the, the district was really built around the Shaminy Manor complex. And, and it's the same zoning we have for the hospital, I believe, and
No, hospital C four.
C four, okay.
Yeah, so.
So theoretically, they could build on there, just wouldn't be apartments or
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole laundry list of institutional uses that are permitted, okay? Agriculture, riding academy, kennel, place worship, school, library, museum, recreational facility, athletic facility, golf course. You need a hundred acres though. Private organization or community, daycare service, nursing home, hospital, municipal government, detention facility, office, utility operating terminal, non-tower wireless communications, research, wind energy, guesthouse, bed and breakfast, cemetery and recycling facility.
Make a heck of a nice spot for a township building.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're zoned institutional too.
And the hospital isn't interested? We, we know the hospital doesn't need any space or Rothman or somebody who might want to
I think the idea is that I think the idea is that that might be.
We we just need to, you know. I mean, the hospital's trying to contain everything on the campus, but yet they've kind of branched as well. Now is this too close, too far? I mean, you know. Came out there and available, Nancy? I mean, who knows? I mean, right now, everybody sees it as the county property. Do you know what I mean? So if if it were available, you know, who who knows what? You know.
Yeah, Rothman did a beautiful job right up Kelly Road and then they're taking a chunk into the new building too.
The community college was looking for a site in Central. Point two and. That would be. You know, that's.
Yeah. Greg made a comment about a campus setting, so, you know, that he'd like to see something on those as a campus-like setting.
I'd love to see an athletic facility because I think it would allow for tournaments and would bring in people to enjoy all the tourism in Doylestown, would bring wonderful commerce and they come and then they go. They're here three days and then they're gone. And they have them out in Spooky Knook, they have them down in Downingtown and we've seen through all the park and rec, how everyone's just dying for fields between lacrosse, soccer, baseball, all of it, really. It could be phenomenal, huh?
Indoor too, Nancy.
Indoor too. I mean, it could be really phenomenal. An opportunity and we're primed for it. People are paying inordinate amounts of money for their kids because everybody's going pro in this area, if you didn't know.
I think the problem is the site they're talking about isn't ideal. Ideal would be Turk Park one and two where it's flat.
Right, all of it. I like roll it all up into one, yep.
Well, that's, you know, we, I think when we look at it, we have to do that. We have to throw Turk Park into the mix too.
Because their fields aren't good. I mean, they need, they have serious drainage issues.
Oh, they do. But I think that's just part of the whole mixes. You know, do we, do we get that property? Do we get a longer term lease? Do we get more? Do we, you know, what do we do there? As long as, we don't get the county coming in front of us asking for something this big. The only thing they come in front of us for is asking for a waiver of land development fees. So I think.
I mean, every, the last big thing they did was really the was the the nursing home.
Yeah.
That was the big thing. Everything else has been like a store, a quote, little larger storage unit.
Or a prison ass, you know, different things of prison, but.
But I think, I mean, they're not big, so this is, this would be, this would be big and it's it's gonna be, I think, a significant change, if you will, to the viewscape of that area. Traffic is gonna be a huge situation at Alms House.
Yeah, well, we get asked to fix that intersection once and for all, I hope.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, and I mean, I don't think they're looking to do it. I mean, I think they're probably looking to partner with somebody or.
Well, that's the idea of having.
Subdivide off land or something, so.
Stephanie, I don't know if anybody, I read that and somebody brought it up several times in the Park and Rec community meeting, there's a new Director of Athletics at Del Vow College who's very enthusiastic. And I think, I mean, I don't know where Del Vow is, maybe they'd want to help partner with maybe having some kind of, you know, access to these kinds of facilities, because it's obviously way beyond what they have. You know, and there's there's that indoor piece, you know, with the, you know, so I don't know how that happens or how it gets started, but someone did mention that person's name like twice during that meeting.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll get that information before, you know, for our next meeting, because that would be great to start kicking off this discussion seriously, you know. Does anybody have anything else for for tonight?
Judy, I know the Ways and Means is gonna discuss it at their meeting about coming back into the building or staying on Zoom. And so I wanted to throw that out there. You you guys don't have to say anything right now, but if you want to start thinking about when you all feel comfortable with that.
I'm ready to meet outside. Looking for some nice weather.
The only problem I run into is if it rains and that's not so nice and and everything, so, you know.
I was gonna be away next next month and Zoom meetings really work well, because I can do it from anywhere. This is perfect for me.
You could still Zoom in. I mean, we can.
Right, we can do a hybrid.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Not that easy, but believe me, it's a little complicated.
Yeah, I I think the hybrid was the one that didn't work as well.
Yeah, the hybrid was a little, it's a little difficult, but I mean, it it's it may work better. One person zooming in versus, you know, you know, we can always accommodate, kind of like the milkboard case where you could call into the meeting. I mean, you know, Greg could zoom in, but we could, you could all still be in person or if you want to wait a couple of months, but I think, you know, we're probably getting closer to that.
Well, I would think by May, I mean, hopefully everybody's gonna start getting vaccinated. You know, in the next month, I'm hopeful, you know, that this will come through. And then, you know, we can meet in person without any hesitation, you know, but that should be, I'm thinking May. I'm not sure about April, though.
I got my second shot last week, so.
Did you? Good, good. Oh, well, I haven't got many.
Go on the Rite Aid site.
You're too young and healthy.
I don't qualify quite yet, so.
A few more years, is that what you were saying, Judy? You need a few more years?
Few more years before I'm eligible, right? But like, you know, my daughter, who's twenty-three, she just, she just got hers, you know. She considers essential somehow.
And then Judy just wanted me to mention, I, and I didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting, Judy, but Don Page, a township resident, ninety-six years old, and a former longtime planning commission member, he's he's been off for a long time as well, but he passed away, so condolences to his family, but he was part of the Township Planning Commission, like I said, for a number of years. And also, we learned recently Marty Brooks. His wife passed away as well. He's currently on our Environmental Advisory Council, but you may remember the Brooks track coming through recently to the Planning Commission for subdivision. Yeah. Sins to his family.
Wasn't Marty on the Planning Commission years ago?
Oh, that would have been before my time.
That was before me too.
So that was a really long time ago.
Marty must have been a teenager when he was on the Planning Commission.
Newly graduated from Del Vow, I'm sure. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with everyone. I know some people knew him, but knew Don and certainly our condolences to both the Brooks and Page family.
All right, well, I guess we're done. And I, my gut feeling is next month we'll be Zooming again. But hopefully May we'll be able to meet.
Fingers crossed.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.